We left off at the end of page twenty six and today we start page twenty seven. Learning the art of allowing. You know something? Allowing is what law of attraction is all about. It is just, all of it is about allowing. Learning to be an allower. And what does that mean? So on page twenty seven, Abraham says, uh, this is uh, the third paragraph down. The broader perspective, the broader non-physical part of you to whom you have an eternal relationship is one who loves. When you are not loving, you are not practicing the art of allowing. The broader non-physical part of you is one who knows your worthiness. When you feel unworthy, you are not practicing the art of allowing. And so, allowing. Allowing happens right from the top of the emotional scale. We are allowing when we are here. But you see, the thing is, I have to take those words back. Because we are allowing from every, every place on the emotional scale, we are allowing. But what we are allowing changes based on where we are on the emotional scale. The best things are up here. The best things that we can allow are at the top of the emotional scale, but we are allowing all the time. Allowing means manifesting. Another word is manifesting. What are you allowing? You can interchangeably say, what are you manifesting? What are you manifesting? We are always manifesting something. In every moment, a manifestation is taking place. This moment with these people here is a manifestation. This co-creation is a manifestation. Every moment, something is happening, which means that we are manifesting the next moment of our life. Now, 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 every moment, something is happening and it is a manifestation. What is happening? The quality of the manifestation depends on where we are on the emotional scale. Right? So as long as we are living, we are manifesting something. Every moment of time is about manifesting. The what changes based on where we are on the emotional scale. That's all. That's, that's the difference. And if you understand that, then you can grasp all of it really quickly. So then Abraham says flawed premise number four. I have come here to live the right way of life and to influence others to do the same right way of living. And what feels right to me must be the right way of living for all. Not true. Not true. That is why it is a flawed premise. It is not true. The diversity of life and the diversity of all the different ways in which people live life is part of the expansion of the universe. And there is no right or wrong from the point of view of the universe, because everybody's inner being loves them. And everybody's inner being loves all other people. The reason for that is really, really simple. Our inner beings are up here at a place of love. Inner, okay. Inner beings source do not feel contra- contrast. Because inner being and source do not feel contrast, they are not moving up and down the emotional scale. They stay right up here all the time. So because they have no contrast, they have no preference. Because they have no contrast, they have no preference, which means they don't think one is better than the other, because they're not comparing, because there is no contrast. That is why your inner being can stay stable right up here. Source is stable right up here, because source never deviates from a place of love. When we deviate, we are the ones. Why? Because our logic, logical mind takes us up and down the emotional scale. Logic is what discerns contrast. Logic is the source of contrast and takes us up and down the emotional scale. And we have to close the gap in order to manifest the best thing. We are always manifesting something, but we manifest the best thing. Sorry, I'm just looking for my diagram that I can show you. We manifest the best things right from the top of the emotional scale. So. Let's see if you can see this. Can you see this? Awesome. So you see, this is the emotional scale and there are all sorts of emotions lined up here. From this emotion of anger, the only possibilities that you can pull into your manifested reality is this set of realities from the field of all possibilities. Anything is possible. So better things are possible, but they're up here. You cannot get there unless you first go up here and then you can get them. Right? So, so what are we manifesting? At every moment of time, we are manifesting from wherever we are on the emotional scale. If I'm over here, right at the bottom of the emotional scale, then I am manifesting this set. From here, I cannot manifest this thing or this thing or this thing. But the thing that will make me the happiest is from among these. Any one of these will completely satisfy me, not just one. And this is why there is abundance in the universe, because there are, I'm only showing you four, but there are countless opportunities, countless things that are lined up in the field of all possibilities. Because the field of all possibilities is massive. It is huge. But we cannot get these things from here. If you're here, you only have access to this stuff. In order to have access to this, you must go up the emotional scale first. And that is what the art of allowing is all about. Right? So that's what Abraham is referring to over here, is that your inner being always stays right at the top of the emotional scale, never wavers. And it's a good thing that inner beings do not waver, because when inner being does not waver, it's like the inner being is a lighthouse, that is giving a signal. Come this way, come this way, come this way. Right? That's what the lighthouse does. It casts a beam that tells you what path to follow. And it is always casting the safest path. What is the safest path? The path of the, of least resistance. The less rockyest path is the path of least resistance. So inner beings are like a lighthouse, always casting that beam that allows us to find the path of least resistance. And if we listen to our guidance, then we would go up the emotional scale, join our inner being, and now we can open the field of all possibilities from this place high up on the emotional scale. Right? Okay, so let's get back here. So Abraham is saying, since everyone wants to feel good, but there are so many things that are, that others are doing, that as you observe them, you don't feel so good. It is easy to understand how you would come to the conclusion that your path to feeling good is through influencing or controlling the behavior of others. And this is what happens. You should change so that I can feel better. You, my loved one, are doing something that annoys me. Stop doing it so that I can feel better. And Abraham is telling us, you simply cannot get to where you want to be by controlling or eliminating the unwanted. Because when you focus on what you do not want, you magnify it. It becomes bigger. So you cannot push anyone away. You cannot push anything away. Hi to Mika, Heather, Rochelle, good to see you. Andy, good to see you, Jackie, Rosa, good to see you guys. All right, if you want to join us, um, you can find the link under the events tab and you can join us on Zoom. All right. So I love this paragraph, that is the next paragraph on page twenty eight. It's the third paragraph down. And who among you gets to decide which way of living is the right one anyway? Is the largest group, the one that holds knowledge? Or is the group with the greatest capacity to kill other groups, the one who is right? Do poor people have the answer? Do rich people hold the key? Which religion is the right religion? Which way of life is the right one? Is it right to have children? How many is the correct number? And if a woman has children, is it appropriate for her to think of other things? Can she have a career? Or is she now obligated to think of nothing other than her children? How should a man treat his wife? How many wives should he have? Isn't that interesting? Because these are all real world situations, aren't they? One group of people calling the other group wrong, because the other group is doing things differently. And Abraham is telling us, it's not like that. It doesn't work like that. Abraham says, the flawed premise is my group's way of life is the only correct one. So then Abraham says, in that last paragraph in italics, not only do those being pushed against feel the pain, but those doing the pushing feel it as well. I mean, think about it, for those of you who are parents, think about it. When you discipline a child, when you shout at a child, do you feel good? No, you don't. Does the child feel good? No. So the one who is pushing and the one who is pushing against, both feel bad. And so that's what Abraham is saying here. And they say, in fact, the unhappiest, least fulfilled among you are those who are pushing against others. Because in doing so, you are disallowing the most important relationship of all, the relationship between you and you. You and the inner being part of you. Now, on the next page, uh, the first paragraph there. The most important thing in that paragraph that Abraham is talking about is the importance of desires. The importance of contrast and the importance of the desire that comes from that contrast. Because Abraham is saying, it was your intention for new desires to be born within you. And it was your intention to accomplish those desires. You had no intention of hindering the desires of others. You knew that this world is big enough for everyone to create and manifest their own desires. You, and so the last part of that paragraph, the summary is, you intended to decide what you want. You didn't intend to decide what other people should want. You intended to decide what you want, what's right for you, what makes you feel good. You never intended to make that decision for other people. And to allow all others to do the same. You wanted to allow other people to figure out what they thought was right for them. You understood that diversity not only provides the basis of your strength and your expansion, but of your very existence, that last line. Please, folks who are here with me, think about this last line. Because if there is not expansion, existence cannot continue to be. If there is not expansion, existence cannot continue to be. So if we take away all contrast from the world, we will have nothing to feel. There will be no contrast that makes us feel. And if you're not feeling, then you're going to croak.
And that is why diversity is very important.
That's right.
To feel contrast.
Yes. Because you can see it. You can see those people. I don't know if you've had anyone in your life who has been afflicted by Alzheimer's or dementia, but you can see that now those people, they're not feeling contrast anymore. They're not feeling contrast. So there is no desire for them to move forward. Right? They just sit there. And they gaze out into nothingness, because there's no more contrast in their life. The, the, the calling of life, the energy that is life-giving, comes from contrast. Okay? So, uh, and, and, and that also in the end tells us that your inner being, so your inner being is non-physical, right? And, and therefore, your inner being is not feeling contrast. That is why your inner being is non-physical. If you stop feeling contrast, then you will not exist in physical form. You will join your inner being in non-physical form. So contrast is important for us to, to remain in physical existence. Without it, nothing's happening. Okay? Um, all right, so the next heading is very interesting. Let's, let's go there. The next heading on page twenty nine is, do we have power to influence others rather than control them? Notice influencing and controlling are two different things. And Abraham says exactly that over here. Abraham says, it's good that you see that there is a distinction between control and influence. But let's read Jerry's question. Jerry's question is, I'd like to talk more about the power of influence or the power of control. We have over one another in our relationships. How much power over others do we actually have? And how can we avoid being influenced away from something that we want by another who thinks that we should want something different? Parents do it to children all the time. You want this? No, you should be wanting that. You want ice cream? No, you should have broccoli. Why don't you want carrots? All right, so then Abraham is saying, even though you may join forces with others to push against the unwanted and even when it appears that your forces have overwhelmed the opposing forces, you never actually gain control. But instead, you enhance or add to your attraction of more unwanted. The faces and places may change, but more unwanted keeps coming and you find no sustainable control. And this is important. Because you see, at the end of the day, you never have control. I know all of you know this, because I know this, because all of us have at one point in time been children. And when you were children, it was more pronounced, but it is still pronounced. Somebody says something to you and you say, okay, to them. And in your head, you're thinking, oh, no, no way, I'm listening to you. Right? But we used to do so much of that when we were kids, remember? Our parents used to say all sorts of things and we used to say, yeah, just look away. Just look away and then I'll do what I want. Right? And but that's the whole thing. Just because somebody is paying lip service to what you want, or even if they are doing the action that you want them to do, doesn't mean that they are thinking the way you want them to think. Because you don't control how anyone else thinks, even when they are acting a certain way. You all know this, because all of us have done this. We act in ways that are appropriate. Because that keeps conflict to a minimum. But that doesn't mean that the other person has control of what is going on in my head. Oh, I was a master at it. I never listened in here. But out there, I did what I was expected. But I never listened in here. That's probably why I am who I am. No, it's most certain that that is why I am who I am, because I never listened. Never really listened. All right.
And they teach you that, Sarah.
Yeah.
I, I, I went to a boarding school and my sister would say, and that became part of my life. You tell the noms yes to everything they say.
Yes.
And then you do whatever you want.
That's right.
So that became, okay, yes. Like I do that with my husband sometimes. Okay, yes, yes. So to acknowledge them, to show some respect, but then.
My mother had a proverb, so although she always wanted to control us, but she had a proverb that we learnt better than her. And you guys, I will translate it for you, but probably Lakshmi will understand it. Lakshmi, you speak Hindi, right? You don't speak Hindi? Do you speak Gujarati? Okay, I, I can't hear you. Okay, so anyway, so I'll, I'll just translate it. I'll say it in my head. The proverb is, um, listen a hundred times to what people are saying to you, but do what you feel like doing. Don't, don't let them control you. It's, um, in, in Urdu, it is, sun laak jo koi sunaye ki jo wo jo man me aaye. So, uh, my mother used to say that often, because she was exactly like that as well. She wouldn't let other people control her, but she tried to control us. And I sat in front of her thinking, mm-hmm, you taught me.
You never said that to her?
Nope. No, I knew it was good for me. I listened. I listened, I didn't do. Right? But that's the thing. You can never control how people feel. You can control their actions. You can incarcerate everyone you think has worked, walked, uh, uh, you know, a path that you don't agree with, incarcerate all of them. Do you control how they think? No.
So how do you influence how they think?
By loving them. Only love has power of influence. Love has power of influence. When you, when you vibrate at the top blue cap level of the emotional scale, you have maximum power of influence, all the way from hope to love. Because your hope also gives other people hope. When you are energized by a feeling of hope, from hope to love, you can influence people. Isn't that what a leader does? A leader is so full of positive hope, that they bring a whole crowd of people along with them. Right? And when a, a leader, so look at what is happening around the world without mentioning any names here, but look at the leadership of countries. Leaders who don't inspire, look at what people say about them. Because, and then look at those leaders who have inspired nations. Then why does the whole world know Mandela, Nelson Mandela? Why do we? Because he gave people hope.
Yeah.
He, he gave everyone hope. That's why people are influenced by your energy of hope or anywhere here. Your hope is energy. Your love is energy. Uh, what's her name? What was the name of the nun who was working in India?
Madhita Risa.
Madhita Risa. She, she was very calm. She, you didn't feel lots of energy from her. She was very calm. And collected. But she moved people across the world. Because she was a lover. Her vibration was one of pure love towards everything and everyone. She was an absolute example of someone who always comes from here. So what did she do? She influenced people. She didn't control them. She influenced them. People, people, you, you'll find this in any leadership position. Those people, co- control was Hitler. So how, do we love Hitler?
No.
So the, the, see, there's where you see the difference.
Oh my god.
Right? Madhita Risa had influence. She didn't control. Nel- Nelson Mandela had influence. He didn't control. But Hitler, on the other hand, and we have so many examples in history, Saddam and, you know, I could go down a, a list of people, but the, the point is, the difference is, they tried to control. How long did it last? How far did it go? You cannot control.
Parents to know.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes. Last night, I was preparing a booklet for the new program that is coming out about intuitive parenting. And I was talking about the eight rules of successful parenting. And the first rule was, don't make rules. Don't make too many rules. Because rules, rules are an effort to control behavior. Right? And, and so you'll find that where, in nations where there is a lot of control, there are a lot of rules. Every rule is like having a boss. Every rule is, is like having a boss. You are obeying that.
A dictator.
Mm-hmm. So influence is better than control. You, you can influence people. You cannot control people. In the end, soon as, remember when you were a child, what you used to think? Oh, mother, just look away so that I can go do what I want. You know? So when you control people, as soon as you look away, they do what they want. And nations are the same way. Right? How much, at the end of the day, control results in rebellion. Right? You can't control, but influence is different. Influence comes from a place of positive energy. That's influence. And so think about it. Why do we gravitate towards being near or going to hear or listening to people like Abraham, like Wayne Dyer, or you know, all these great personalities? We want to be with them, because they are influencing us in a positive way and we know it. We know that their influence is bringing out the best in us. That's why we want to be there. It's the same, it's the difference between how do you motivate people? Through fear or through, um, through motivation, through positive reinforcement? How do you do it? Which one is better? Fear, motivation through fear does not last. And it's not good for the person, because here's the thing. The parent who makes lots of rules is always looking at the children to figure out if they broke any of them. So the parent is stressed. Because now it's a matter of your respect and honor. If any of those rules are broken, that means you don't respect me. So now that's stress. I have to watch you all the time. To make sure that your behavior is in accordance with the rules that I made. Right? So does the parent feel relaxed? No. Do the children feel relaxed? No. But you take that, you can extrapolate it to an organization, to a nation. It works the same way. So the power of love is the power of influence. And because, here's the thing, you see, here's the beautiful thing to understand about it. Because you're influenced from love, then you're not influencing people to do anything wrong. Because someone who comes from a place of love never wants to hurt anyone. And therefore, it is the most powerful type of co-creation. And therefore, it is the most powerful type of co-creation. It's only when people are low on the emotional scale that they act out in ways that hurt other people. Lot of times, people say, uh well, that person came in and shot up a hole, you know, like so many people and they were grinning when they did it. Yes, they were grinning, but were they happy? You can tell the difference. Right? Just because. Your face looks a certain way, doesn't mean that's how you're thinking inside. I mean, I know, there was a time in my life where I said to myself, I wear masks all the, all day, every day. Which mask am I going to wear today? Because, you know, to be appropriate or to fit in or whatever. You know that you can display a different mask. Has nothing to do with how you're thinking and feeling. Alright, so then the next heading here. Do I wanna talk about true power? So the last paragraph is about true power. You do not have the benefit or help of your true power if you are trying to control people. Because your true power comes from your alignment with your inner being. The next heading then on page thirty is, how do we harmonize a diverse family? So Jerry's question is regarding the family relationships between parents and children. How can an independently thinking, leading edge child who is learning and growing exist in harmony with parents? Who want to train him in their static way of thinking and behaving? In other words, what if your parents don't want to see change or new thought? Amazing question, so just as a side note, uh if, in case you guys are, maybe you guys are aware of, but or not aware of. But Jerry, during his lifetime, most part of his lifetime, had a very bad relationship with children from his first marriage. There was no love there. So um this parenting question is very personal to uh where Jerry was coming from. Um Abraham says, this leads us to the explanation of yet another flawed premise. Flawed premise number five, because I am older than you, I am wiser than you, and therefore you should allow me to guide you. And all parenting is like that. I know better. Cause I'm your mother. I told you so. Told you so. But the thing is, you planted the belief first and then you told me so, of course. While your parents and others who arrived on your planet before you do help to provide a platform of stability for you when you're born. They do not possess the wisdom that you are seeking. Your expansion will come from your personal experiences and your knowledge will come from. Your connection to your broader perspective. Most of the rules, guidance rules and laws that are passed down from generation to generation are written by people who are not in. The state of allowing their connection with their broader knowledge. In other words, the majority of guidance that is thrust upon you has come from a perspective of lack. And it cannot lead you to an improved situation. Yeah. So that is why I say the less rules you make, the easier the life of the parent and the easier the life of the child. Now, I did not know that with my daughter because she was older and I had not met Abraham at that point. But I knew that when my son came along. So I decided, if Abraham says. You don't need to worry about your children, I'm not gonna worry about him. I'm not gonna worry about when he wakes up, when he sleeps, whether he eats, whether he brushes his teeth, I'm not gonna worry about it. And so, um my son, when he was a baby, like a good mother should, I tried to teach him to brush his teeth and he hated it. He would have nothing of it. He didn't want to do it. And so I thought about it and I said, well, Abraham says, don't worry about it, not your problem. So it's not my problem, I'm not gonna worry about it. I stopped checking on whether or not he brushed his teeth. And he didn't brush his teeth. But you see, I never gave him a negative belief because of, I did not say to him, if you don't brush your teeth, da 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 da. I never said that. So. And I never took him to the dentist. I I I go on a need, need to go basis. Uh that's also something I learned from Abraham. So his father came around and. And took him to the dentist one day because his father himself was going to the dentist, so he thought that. He'll bring my son along and so my son went for his first cleaning appointment. When he was maybe eight. He had his teeth cleaned. And. I don't believe he ever brushed his teeth since when he was four to when he was eight. There was no evidence that he ever brushed his teeth. And he came back. When he came home, he said, you know, mom, I went to the dentist. And the dentist cleaned my teeth and the dentist said, I have perfect teeth. It's like, good job. And then he said, and the dentist told me, I should do one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. In order to keep it that way and I was like, okay, now the beliefs have entered the picture. Right? And even then, I said, okay, fine, if you want to accept those beliefs, that's fine. But you know and I know, you have never brushed your teeth. But to me, it was proof. To me, the reason that is important and the reason I remember it and the reason I talk about it is because, to me, it was proof. Of what happens when you don't give your children a negative belief. When you don't communicate your own beliefs to your children, then literally nothing bad can happen. Because you didn't tell them that anything bad could happen and aside from myself and him, nobody else knew. So. So you see, our beliefs literally do control our reality now. Had I communicated this to someone else, maybe even my father or, you know. Maybe even his father, my son's father. You know what they would have told me, right? They would have told me all sorts of things. But you see, here's the thing, I did not talk about it because you don't talk about things. Unless you want, you want advice, I didn't want anyone to advise me to do other than what I was doing. And it was a beautiful experiment for me, a personal experiment of well-being. How it truly works. And and from there, I learnt a lot of other things of not communicating, so when Abraham is saying. As parents, it's not our job to give our beliefs to our children. That's not my belief, that you shouldn't brush your teeth, I brushed my teeth. Right? But I didn't give him that belief. So it's, really does boil down to our belief systems. What you believe is what you will manifest. Alright, let's get back here. So. As Abraham says, our parents give us stability. Right? I mean, they give us a place to live, they feed us, they clothe us. So they give us a place of stability, they also are a source of contrast in our life. Our, our parents and who they are is a source of data. Based on which we decide how we are going to live life. Glass half empty or glass half full? I'm going to listen to other people or I'm not gonna listen to other people. Alright, so the next flawed premise number six is. Who I am began the day I was born into my physical body. As an unworthy being, I was born into a life of struggle in order to try to achieve greater worthiness. So this is a flawed premise, yes, flawed premise. But you'll be surprised how many people believe that, that they are here to learn lessons. And Abraham has told us time and time again, there's no lesson to be learnt, only joy to be had, no lesson to be heard, learnt. Because you think about it, if you believe that you have lessons to be learned, then what you basically are saying is that you are less than what you should be. When I learn this lesson, then I will become more perfect. But you're not, you're already perfect. So there is no lesson to be learnt, there's. I want you to differentiate and it took me a while to understand this, there is a differentiation between growth. And learning lessons. Listen carefully, because if you believe the school system, they are one and the same. Growth is about learning lessons. But growth is not about learning lessons. Growth is about giving birth to desire. You grow because you are giving birth to desire, not because you're learning lessons. So this is a very important distinction between how other people talk about growth and when Abraham says. There are only three things in life, freedom, growth and joy. The growth that they talk about is not about learning lessons. We don't become more because we are learning lessons, we become more because we are giving birth to desires. Okay? Cause this used to confuse me, it used to confuse me to think that Abraham says there are only three things in life, freedom, growth and joy. But then Abraham says there are no lessons to be learned, so how am I growing? Like where's the growth happening? What is the growth factor, Abraham? So the growth is inevitable, Abraham says and has said, your growth is inevitable. Because contrast is inevitable and your growth is happening from your feeling the contrast and giving birth. To preferences and desires, that's it, your growth is happening because you're reaching for more. Not because you're learning lessons. Growth, let me repeat that, your growth is happening because you're reaching for more. Not because you're learning lessons. And there is no other teacher that I have heard who has said it this way. No other teacher has said it this way, because they all talk about learning lessons. There are no lessons to be learned, Mercedes, you wanna say something?
Yeah, but Sarah, okay, so the the. Growth is because you're reaching for more, you're reaching for more because you're learning a lesson.
No.
You're, cause you're learning something, I mean, I'm learning that the law of attraction is what it is. So I'm which, I'm growing and I'm reaching for more.
You're reaching for more because you have desire, law of attraction and the understanding of it is helping you to achieve that desire.
A learning lesson?
There's no lesson to be learned, because the thing is. It all boils down to being a lover, because love is your true state. You don't have to learn a lesson to be, go back to being your true state. Here is a, here is an object and it's all covered up with dirt. Does it have a lesson to learn when I take the dirt off? Is it learning a lesson? No, it's just becoming who it really is, nice and clean and shiny. Right? It's the analogy that Abraham has, when you put a a cork and you depress it underwater, you let it go, the cork comes up. Did the cork learn a lesson? No.
It's true nature.
It just came back to its true nature. So when you are coming back to your true nature, you're not learning a lesson, you're just coming back to who you really are. Right? So tha- that's the little bit of a difference. Now you can, in in commonly accepted lingo. People call it learning a lesson. And that's okay, I'm not saying that that is wrong, that's generally how people speak about it. All I'm doing, because I'm here helping us to interpret Abraham's work. All I'm here to do is to explain to you that when Abraham talks about growth, they are not asking you to learn lessons. They are asking you to return to who you really are. And you can do that like that, the minute you decide. Going to live from a place of love. It's the same as deciding never going to smoke again, it's the same, it's a decision. It's a decision. Okay? Awesome. Okay, so, um. So flawed premise, who I am began the day I was born, why is that wrong? Well, because it didn't begin the day I was born, because I have continuity over, I am eternal, my soul, my spirit. My inner being is eternal, source is internal, I came from source, I go back to source, I am eternal. So that is wrong, uh who I am did not begin the day I was born into my physical body. As an unworthy being, which you never are. I was born into a life of struggle, we were never meant to struggle. We were ma- never meant to struggle, struggle is something we created because we lost track. We went off the highway into the bushes. And then it became a struggle. In order to try to achieve greater worthiness, we are not here to become more worthy, we are worthy. Okay. You did not begin on the day you were born into your physical body, okay, so we already talked about this. Um you, okay, this is important, you eagerly came, so the last part on page thirty one. You eagerly came into this physical time-space reality because it is the leading edge of creation and you are a creator. You adored the idea of focusing on this world of contrast because you understood the value the contrast would have. In helping you, a creator to focus and create, that's it. Focus and create. So then, uh the second paragraph there on page thirty two, Abraham says. You may remember how you felt as a child when someone focused their disapproval at you. The negative feeling you experienced was your indication that their opinion of you was out of alignment. With who you really are and what you really know. Right? In that moment, you felt the beginning of the tugging of that other person pulling you away from your broader perspective of who you are. So this is really an interesting thing to kind of think about a little more. While it never feels good to you to view yourself or anything differently than the source within you sees it. Over time, you became accustomed to the discomfort of your gradual disempowerment until eventually. You began looking to others for guidance, leaving your own guidance to fade into the background. Most recently, I've been coaching two beautiful, very young women, one of them in her. Early twenties and the other one in her later twenties. And it has had a profound uh impact on me because they took me right back. To twenty years ago when I first met Abraham. Coaching these young women has taken me right back there. The reason it has taken me right back there is because. Twenty years ago, before I knew Abraham's work, if somebody said to me. You are so stressed, I would have looked at them like they had horns on their head. I'd have said, no, I'm not stressed. And as I spoke to these two young women. I saw myself in them. And the thing is, because that stress, the stress of not being who you are, that is stress. Not being who you really are is stress. And you get so used to it that you don't, you stop noticing it. That stress just becomes a part of your life. So you don't even notice that it is there. And that is what is going on with these two people because when you, if you just ask them the question, are you happy? The answer they will get is, I am happy, yes, I'm happy, I'm a happy person. You know, because that stress, little by little by little, because it's there every day. They've just got used to carrying it around. So the, but then I look at their life and so many things that should not be happening are happening to these young women. And I'm like, oh sweetheart, you're not even aware. You have lost the awareness of feeling that something is off. Because you've just been in that place for such a long time. What's an example that I can give you? Very easy example for everyone to understand. The weather that you're used to, that you're born in. You don't even notice. Right? So I I had the experience of moving from a country that gets really, really hot in the summer to a country that never gets hot in comparison in the summer. Right? So where I was used to dealing with se- I know centigrades, I don't know Fahrenheit, so forty seven to forty nine degrees centigrade in the summer. To moving to a place where if it's twenty four degrees, people are peeling their clothes off because it's hot, right? So in the beginning, it was a huge contrast. Because for me, it was winter if it was down to ten degrees. From forty seven degrees, normal everyday average going down to ten degrees was winter. But now where I was, winter was, it was winter when it was minus ten, not plus ten. When it comes to zero, people say it's warm. And over a period of years, I have now become accustomed to it. So it doesn't, I it the, I don't feel it anymore. Ten degrees, when it hits ten degrees after winter, I'm peeling off my long sleeves and putting on sleeveless. Because I've got used to it. There's no contrast anymore. Now when I go back home, that's contrast. If I was to go back to Pakistan, that's contrast now. Now I can't, that's huge contrast for me. The other day I was looking at temperatures uh in the Dominican because I'm going to be going there. And I was like, oh, this is like going back to Karachi, I'm not used to that anymore. That is way too hot. But what I'm, and stress is like that, folks. Stress is like that. So when somebody says to me, I am mostly happy, then I have to probe them based on their life, I know that that's not true. And then I ask them, well, okay, so when you wake up in the morning, you feel like jumping out of bed and and having a pillow fight, you know, like because if you're telling me you're really happy, then that's that's, that's happy. But if you're telling me you have difficulty just getting out of bed, that's not happy. You've made the lo- wrong link. You've got so used to the stress in your life that you don't even see that you are under stress. And so this is where a big problem happens with people because they start doing the work and they join me in the unlimited forty day uh law of attraction workout. And then they say, oh, I feel so much better, I must be here. But in reality, what's happened is they've gone from here to here. The relief is so big because they had been under stress for such a long time that this relief feels so big that they feel like they're on the top, but they're not. The problem that happens is that they go here and now they start looking for manifestations that can only come from here. And then they say, oh, it's law of attraction is not working. No, law of attraction is exact and working all the time. You're not working it. Because you've got so used to this. And I was exactly like that, that is why I can see it in them. Cuz you know, you just become so strong, you just take it like it's nothing. Right? Anyone ever to- told you how strong you are? Like I used to get told that, oh, Zara, you're so strong, we can't be like you. I used to take it like a compliment, it's not. It's not. It means that Zara has lost all capacity to feel. Right? So you have to teach yourself to start using that emotional guidance system. So that you know whether or not you are stressed. Because if worries become your natural state of being, you don't even know that you're there, it's right under your nose, so you can't see it. And it is always there. It's like um in my advertising class when I was doing my MBA. Uh we, we did this exercise where if you see a billboard the first time, a new skin goes on the billboard, you see it, you notice it. After three days, you drive by, you don't even know it's there. Until they change the skin again. You don't even know it's there. And that is what happens to stress. You don't even know it's there because it's always there. You get used, so used to it that you don't do anything about it. And as I read these words, that's what it's all about is you, you have to rekindle that awareness by asking those questions, okay, so I think I'm feeling happy. Does it feel like, uh you know, I'm just laying in the field, looking up at the clouds? You know, like what, what, what does it mean and how does it feel? How should it feel? Because you have experienced those feelings in the past. So. And that's why I say benchmark your emotions. Benchmark your emotions, you need to know what emotions really feel like, benchmark them. What is the difference between, you know, depression is a very loosely used word in our society these days, oh, I'm depressed, I feel so depressed. Alright, you're depressed? Uh so you, you're telling me you can't get out of bed and you don't want to change your clothes? And you don't have the energy to do anything, that's depressed. Something didn't work out the way you want it to to work out and you're unhappy for a day, that's not depression. But if you keep saying that to yourself, what are you attracting? Right? Yeah, because that's law of attraction. So that's why we watch the words that come out of our mouths and what those words mean. Alright. I honestly thought that we were going to get further ahead today, but it is what it is and we're gonna close the call uh at page thirty four and we'll pick it up from, no, sorry, page thirty three, to the child. We'll pick it up from that heading next time when we meet. So I hope that you guys got something out of attending today. Thank you for being here, really appreciate it, love you all lots. And I'll see you next Thursday.
Thank you.
Any questions before I close? If anyone has a question, I can stay for a little bit and look after the questions.
How do you get rid of all that crap that you have acquired?
By paying attention. By paying attention. By understanding that it's important and then paying attention.
Also, I just wanted to make, by paying attention to all your feelings.
Yes. Yes.
And then dealing with that according to everything we learn.
Yes, but then you have to go a step further backwards in the sense that you need to benchmark your feelings. Because if you're so used to stress that you don't even feel stress is there, then the first thing that you need to work on is to start feeling again, because you're not feeling.
And if you've been a person all your life that you don't like to be told, uh then uh you you just, it's just that you brought me back, I don't know everybody else here, but you brought me back to my to my youth, to my
Yeah.
not feeling understood.
Yeah.
And and I felt something told me that's where you started, that's
Yes.
where you come from.
Yes.
And then I rebelled and all that, so all that thing is inside of me.
Yes, that's right.
Maybe causing me stress. So, oh my god, this is magic, it's like uncovering.
But you see, when you understand that, it's a decision to let it go like that. Now I know I don't need to hang on to it. I can just let it go, it's gone.
Sarah, this is, this is complex material here.
Yes, it is. No, it is not.
I think that your timing is perfect as
It is, it is, it is the most complex book that Abraham has written. But it is the most, it is of the most value. If you really understand what's in here, it is of the most value.
So don't feel bad about not covering more.
Oh, no, I don't, not really. Not really.
Thank you.
You are so welcome. Awesome. Alright, folks, see you next week. Bye bye.
Bye.